...performed in accordance with the applicable regulations. The owner shall present to the building inspector a copy of the asbestos survey, and if necessary, proof of the completion of any required abatement work prior to the demolition of the existing building. Through the incorporation of these measures, the proposed action will not have a significant adverse environmental impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contaminants. The project site does not contain any known existing contamination. It's not undergoing remediation, and there are no new contamination sources or hazards, wastes associated with the proposed action. The proposed action or any adjoining property is not the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility. Other impacts: no other potentially significant adverse impacts were identified. Summary, based on the foregoing secret evaluation, the planning board finds the proposed project will not result in a significant adverse impact, and the board hereby adopts this negative declaration.
I think I missed a part. Can you start?
There's a resolution that goes along with it, but we'll make it part of the record.
Motion to accept.
Right, with the resolution of the planning board of the Village of Washingtonville adopting the negative declaration pursuant to secret for the Orange County Bagel Project, 32 West Main Street Site Plan. All eyes and number Dylan here is absent. Resolution passes. So, that means secret is closed, so you can now, with the board's motion, go back to zoning board's appeals so that they can adopt whatever super findings that they want or adopt through the courts with ours and have a final decision on those variances.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I have a question to ask from your comments. I'll send it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Take care, John.
Next item on our agenda, an applicant ECRAM helper, 36 North Street, application for subdivision and site plan, section block and lot 107-2-63. RM zoning district proposal includes subdividing the subject property into two parcels and seeking approvals to construct a four-unit townhouse on each lot for a total of eight units. Awesome.
Hello, everyone. How you doing? Good to be back. As we continue to make evolution with this design process for the project, we submitted to you ten copies of the site plan C1 to C4, two architectural plans A1 and A2, two renderings, the short form EAF revised, also email from the state regarding state wetlands on the site. Also, in addition to that, and it was after the submittal, so the response from Chevau came later. Can I take this off?
That's fine.
Is that up there? No one wants to be around me right now. So, we did receive correspondence from Chevau, and I did submit it, again, it was after the submission date, but I wanted to get it to the board as soon as possible. And they found that there was no archaeological findings on the site, and they had, were not seeking historic status or not seeking federal funding. So, their comments, I believe, to just surmise was to add landscaping around it to buffer the site from the surrounding area identifying more specifically the Brotherhood Wyman. In light of the comments, as you know, we're trying to get back to the zoning board for their review of the fourth unit on each lot, which is the variance that we're seeking. In response to the last planning board's meeting, we did develop the design associated with having two buildings facing each other with a shared drive, which though was a great idea. The rendering showed lighting that would be period to the area and to the architecture. And we tried to develop the architecture even that much more, put federal-style details, include brackets, trim work, corner boards, freeze boards, and things of that nature to just develop that type of an active architecture associated with the area. The rendering is preliminary. The architectural elevations were more detailed, and I'm hoping, or I believe it did satisfy at least some of the comments that were brought up at the last meeting. We did receive John Pichacini's comments, and quite honestly, we're in agreement with most of them. I mean, there are engineering details that need to be developed, engineering design that needs to be furthered. I'm not sure how far along in that process we need to get before we go back to the zoning board, because the fourth building on each lot definitely impacts the length of drive and impacts so many different things. So, we're here to answer any other questions and what can be done in this process to continue on.
So primarily, I would like the board to focus on if you have any feedback with regard to the design of the site plan. Comments on the renderings is fine, but mostly if you have any concerns with the actual design of the site plan, because that would need to be addressed. If we do send them, if we want to send them back to the ZVA, we do want to have it in a form that is close-ish without the details to what it's going to look like moving forward.
So I appreciate you taking our feedback and making the changes that you did. For me personally, if the plan goes through and the design, the layout stays the same. I was hoping for something a little bit more substantial for the side that faces North Street. That that's actually the front, like that it mimics the other homes that are there. The way it is right now, to me, looks like a side entrance to a deck and not a main entrance to a home similar to the homes on that road. As it's drawn right now, although yes, I appreciate the feedback and the changes, it still doesn't look like the rest of the street. And I just picture, you know, having a wedding at the winery and looking out the side of somebody's house. What if they have their garbage cans on the side? If it is actually the front of a home, you wouldn't see stuff like that there. So that's my comment on the side of the building.
Would you give any comments?
Yeah, I was going to say, my personal comment is, and I understand going back and forth on this is, as I said, just take a walk down that street. No buildings look anything like what you're presenting to us on that street. My comment is to try to match what those buildings look like. And there's nothing with brick siding or, you know, it is a very, very large structure, obviously. And you can, there is ways to work around and make the large structure look smaller or have it look like those buildings in the neighborhood, because that neighborhood is a very historic neighborhood with lots of very old buildings. And if you could somehow incorporate the design of making it look older, even though it is a, you know, new apartment building. Because as I was saying last time, is if you go down to different areas, whether it be, I think they built new apartments on the Hudson, down in, where's that, like Piermont area. And all those buildings, brand-new buildings, but when you walk up, it's, you know, same thing. It's they're facing each other, it's a homely environment, but they all look old and historic, fit that village in that area. So that's the big thing I'm just looking for. I want it to look old, look historic, while still having, you know, modern amenities, of course, and being a modern apartment building, but still fit the feel of that neighborhood.
Stephanie, John, help me out here if I mess up. Have you ever heard of the term clustering?
Cluster development, sure.
I guess to preserve sidelines, the things we've been doing a little research. And would you consider single-family homes in those lots? Did you arrive to cluster, maybe before it? This isn't a hack, this is a question.
Fortunately or unfortunately to this conversation, I'm involved with the cluster development process in another municipality, and it's a long process. You have to establish the yield based on conventional design. And then, once that yield is developed, then do you put together a cluster design or cluster development design based on the yield of the conventional design? That can be a process.
Just a question, did you get four, two or three thousand square foot single-family homes in there?
What is the zoning for that area regarding single-family homes?
I would have to look through it. Hold on, this is MB? No. A lot?
This is the...
RM.
RM.
And you said these are going to be offered for sale, not for rent?
Yeah.
Is there going to be any sort of homeowners association or management company established?
Oh, I would imagine it has to be an HOA to manage the share drive going through a, absolutely. Well, if you're doing an HOA, then why are you subdividing into two lots? Then maybe not. What you're going to have needing is two HOAs.
With a shared drive.
With four seasons. Right.
There's going to have to be a drive, a shared drive.
It has to be a shared drive. It has to be a cross-seasoning because we're ordering both property, of one property. But if you're going to need the HOA, you may want to think about that. We're one HOA for the whole development? Wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. You don't want to do two HOAs. You're already, you're always twice. And that would eliminate the subdivision? Potentially, yes.
RM District, you are permitted single-family dwellings, multiple dwellings, public park or playground, community center, sanitary plant, and community water. So, single-family homes are permitted use. I would have to, as I'm sure the advocate, look at the cluster and see if there would be possibility.
In doing the research, John, as we live with the blundering, the stone wall, et cetera, and the search, and that whole area, and that's, I always get this idea. Thinking that four home value versus much smaller, if you yield the same amount of dollars. And I don't know, I'm not into that. But the whole idea is to help you get as far as people. So this is another...
They would trust in the real test.
And they probably wouldn't put four new backyards to one of our neighbors. It would eliminate having four new backyards to the neighboring home.
Well, I mean, it's not designed, but I would imagine two of the homes would need to be, for lack of a better word, flat open, refrigeration. So, it should be two houses in that, two duplexes around.
I don't need that in that much detail. But that you're, we're thinking, you know, given the size of the property and the ability to cluster, that you could come up with something, you know, very appealing.
So what are we thinking about a yield of four?
I was placing...
Twenty thousand square feet per...
Yeah, for single-family.
Per unit, per single... Twenty thousand square feet per unit for single-family. They have a total of just over sixty-six thousand.
And how much would the cluster allow us?
Well, cluster, you have to prove that by right you can get X number of lots. And what clustering does is allow you to get that same number of lots in a smaller area. But by right, if they use the entire property, they can only get three lots.
And that puts only thousand?
Correct.
And if they're allowed to cluster and still get...
It's prove what you can have by right.
Oh, okay.
Establish a number of homes. Then, you take that number of homes and you can consolidate to try and preserve...
Okay, so they get...
Whatever it is you're trying to save.
So they get three in the cluster?
Right.
Okay. Would they be allowed to apply for variances to try and get four?
Not in a by-right layout. We can look more into the cluster provisions.
Yeah.
We weren't expecting that.
Yeah, I feel like that hasn't been touched.
But maybe you could review that as well.
No, that's a great option.
Come back and say no. That's your option. Take a look at it, see, understand what we're...
Well, my understanding of the process is that you could ask for it or we could ask. And you could say no or...
I mean, would you refer to, we would have to get, well, couldn't the planning board waive the lot area requirement? Not in a by-right way. I see you would have to refer us to the ZVA. We would be subject to their approval for a block.
I don't know if you would ask for a block.
Look at what they're asking for. Come back with either a yes or no. Or come back with a no, we can't because... Be more informed than you discussed earlier. Okay, we will...
I apologize for dropping this on you.
No, that's okay. No, no.
And another question, did the square foot requirement change for duplex style?
It goes down to ten thousand square feet.
The type of residence impacts the minimum lot area.
Okay, so with four duplex, going there?
Ten thousand.
I think it's thirty, yeah. Multiple dwelling with communities that are...
Yeah, I mean, their choices here are for residential, either single-family or multiple dwelling. Multiple dwelling is what they're currently proposing.
Right.
So the alternative would be single-family freestanding homes. Two-family homes or a duplex, not a listed use. We can look more into that for you, but...
Well, multiple dwelling is defined as a building arranged and tended or designed to be occupied by two or more families living independently of each other. They existed, would feel...
We can look more at it.
Yeah, and I would check the comp plan.
And I apologize for dropping that.
No, I haven't. I would also say, yeah, for the two-family, I'd have to check the comp plan to see if that was an intention for the district.
Another question, the size of the house for the twenty thousand square foot? Is there a limit to how much lot coverage? Could be three really large houses versus four smaller?
Four. Lot, the maximum lot coverage is twenty percent of the twenty thousand, which is the minimum lot area.
So, four thousand square foot house, so not that great?
Yeah, I mean, maximum possible, yes.
Depending on, depending on the configuration, obviously, with the other setbacks, I don't, it would have to be actually drawn out to see how it's...
I understand, but I'm saying it wouldn't have to be a two thousand square foot house. It could be bigger because you get the hundred percent coverage, and the clustering would still apply if it's really only used three houses.
Yes, if it were to be a cluster, then there becomes, once the yield is approved, there's flexibility in how you would actually kind of weigh.
Thank you. Any other things you'd like to say to us, or say to me, or whatever? Care to be on later?
I want to further along, so I, my questions would be more specific to get, well, do the architectural review. I mean, is, what would be the process then for us to get back to the ZVA to get the determination on the fourth unit per lot?
I would, I, when reviewing the engineering comments or reviewing your most recent submissions, I would say your site plan is still listing, is still missing the list of the variances you believe that you need. So I feel like that's an important incorporation. The provisions to the planning board application that were asked.
Okay.
And the provisions to the short EAF, because I wouldn't be able to start secret without having a completed list by you. Also, I feel like it wasn't signed, like stuff like that. I would need all that squared away before moving forward. With regard to the board and the environmental review, for the board to consider, I guess another question is, I know we got the DEC emails from you, but have you confirmed whether or not there are wetlands of federal jurisdiction?
No, we have not. So that was one of the comments on John's letters that we have not addressed. So we'll have to get that addressed.
Okay.
Our indication is no from conversations with everybody, but I don't have proof of that. So we'll get that.
Okay. The reason I ask them is they talk back to the board. So, they've submitted a short environmental assessment form. There's also a full environmental assessment form if you feel that is required for a type of project, which would essentially just give you more information for particular areas that you felt were flagged in the short EAF. I think in reviewing, I would just say for the board to review, obviously, the federal wetlands question will determine a lot, but I've, in looking at the topography and the stormwater questions that were brought by the engineer, I'm not sure if the board is interested in seeing a full EAF. Or have questions to me about that?
I think we might need one, because it seems like we always come back to it. We always come back to the wetlands.
Now, as far as timing to go to the ZVA, I hear what the board has to say regarding the architecture, what the buildings look like. I think it's very early to start focusing on if the building is going to be breaker stone, when we don't even know what the buildings will be. You know, if we're considering single-family houses or multifamily. I think where you would like to be focused is on the layout type comments. Establish, okay, we're doing single-family or we're doing multifamily dwellings. Do you like the way the buildings are oriented? Do you like the way the road is laid out? We can get to specifics of the buildings later, but for your board to spend a lot of time and the advocate to spend a lot of time developing a building that the variance is denied, it's a waste of everybody's time.
Makes sense.
So, layout-wise, I think probably my biggest concern, you've got the common driveway that runs through all the site to the dumpster enclosure. How does the dumpster, the garbage truck then get out of the site? Well, we'll have to reorient the dumpster enclosure to one side. We're going to be looking for the ability for a truck to be able to turn around. For emergency vehicle or for just maintenance? Well, we're going to have a garbage truck in there looking regularly. We'll have emergency vehicles. People are going to move in here, they're going to come with a moving truck. They're going to have the levers. Maybe we don't necessarily need the hook and ladder. Right. Well, we need at least reasonable access. So, as far as that type of comment, obviously, we're going to be looking into the potential for clustering and whether we can use single-family duplex or if we're going to stick with this concept. Are there any other concerns from your board on the layout level?
I mean, for as far as the layout, my concern is that we're protecting the view from whoever sees the backyard. The neighbor for the road to the cemetery. You're just going to have soaring backyard. So as long as we're protecting that with firms or privacy treaties.
How much parking is required?
Two spaces per unit.
Plus the garage.
Ah, I believe it's one plus one garage.
One in the garage, one in the driveway.
Correct. So, you may want to consider asking for additional spaces for guests, but what they've provided is what the code specifies they need to provide.
Right, because is the road big enough for a guest to park on the road and people pass around it?
The road is a twenty... What is that, twenty-six? Twenty-six foot is a wide road. A standard car width is only eight feet. So, in theory, you can have cars parked on both sides of the road, and at least they'll have one-way traffic.
Is there something to do with the HLI?
Yeah, but with only four homes on each side, eight homes, how much two-way traffic are you going to have?
I don't think there's enough.
It'll get referred to prior to what?
Yeah. And they have the comment, I don't think there's enough parking. I don't see people, to be honest, to be using the garage as a second spot. You know, people have to get in and out. Somebody, you know, the wrong car is always going to be in the driveway. The car they need is going to be in the garage. But I'd like to see if there's an opportunity for any more parking, even if it was somewhere else after the building, or if it's any other one.
Does the dumpster have to be right there, or can it go over a little bit?
We all, as you're facing a friend, so...
Yeah, maybe provide a spare spot straight back, or, well, then again, you should not worry about getting a emergency big one there and being able to turn it around. You know, if it's a car on the driveway, I think the driveways are turning up.
Public lot nearby.
Correct.
Before you, it wasn't there. Do you have parking lot?
Well, they still, I mean, yes, they're using the fourth unit, but they still do own a substantial amount of property behind it.
I think there needs to be a turnaround with guest box in the back of my...
Now, a lot of my comments were more specific regarding the board and civil lines. Their details, they can be worked out as we go.
Their details, they can be worked out as we go. Drainage, it's gonna be a big issue, but I don't think it's worth spending time until we know what's gonna be built here. It's an exercise in futility to design a substantial drainage solution until we know what we're building.
So recommending to the ZVA to see what they really want to first before we continue with specifics?
I think you want a layout that you're comfortable with.
Yeah.
That can be referred, and then, yes, we can deal with specifics after that. David, you could have Jimmy go back out, he don't know what it's called. I stopped by the site. Something's over. I was back here on the driveway to the cemetery. You know, there's a central drop. It might just be at the limits of the shots, and I was throwing things off. And I think when it's turning into, you know, it's more after the, you know, it's- Something, probably it's gotta hold. What's going on down here?
Yeah, that's probably us, that's, I have no problem with that. I mean, you know, quite honestly, we would go to address all of these, you know, detective comments, we just need to know which-
We just want to have you working on it.
Productive work, you know, I don't know if it works. We appreciate it.
So I think at this point, if we want to, the advocate who just wants to look at the possibility of what a single-family duplexing would look like, obviously you don't want to, I would say you're not gonna provide a plan, just maybe the feasibility, or just speak to the client. And then if you can just get me the files on the application and the EAF, including your list of any variances.
We'll just sit on the C2 point, because our variance request.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It may be reasonable, however you want to do it.
Right.
That's not a problem. All right, yeah, we-
I think we'll talk about that someday.
We can, we'll address the paperwork, you know, logistics right away, it's not a problem. I will, as advised, look into the possibility of four houses we're talking about, or four duplexes.
Look at what your yield will be, and review with your client. If it's something you would consider moving forward, that's part of, bring it in and show it to the board when we get along.
Right.
If you're gonna come back and say, absolutely not, at least make whatever revisions you're gonna propose for this one.
Sure.
Just layout-wise?
Not a problem.
And we determined that the subdivision was with HOA, they would not ask for that, or?